Okay, I think we're all here, ready to start. Do we have, is Mrs. Kennedy here to take notes?
No, Joanne is here.
Okay, Joanne, thank you. So would you, I'm calling toward the meeting of the school committee for February 1st, 2021. Ziel, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Steve Cole. Steve, he needs to unmute. Steve Cole.
Here.
Sheila Spalding.
Here.
Bruce Munin.
Here.
David Hockeiser.
Here.
And Sean Riadern.
Here.
Okay, all present and accounted for, thank you so much. So we're going to go over to Bruce's video as we always do, and we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please, to start the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, appreciate that. And now, Mr. Callahan, would you do public comment for us?
Thank you, I do have a request, if nobody objects. I believe the superintendent has a quick bit of very good news, and I thought it might be nice for him to tell everybody that before we get into the public comment, start the meeting off on a really good foot. Is everybody okay with that?
Sure, certainly, go ahead, Mr. Calligar.
Oh, all right, well, thank you very much by Sheik Callahan. Yes, I think we have some great news, as you all know, we were working with Cataldo and CIC Health, and they assisted us with our surveillance testing a couple of weeks ago for the faculty. In the meantime, we've been working, I think, really hard behind the scenes. Kathy Ricchio, Mayor Holliday, and her staff, really trying to get the vaccinations, or even just even get vaccination dates and all of that. But with working with Cataldo last Thursday afternoon, we are going to be vaccinating our entire faculty and support staff at the end of February. We're going to contract with Cataldo ambulance, and they went agreement to vaccinate the staff the end of February. And as part of the Phase 2 protocols from the state, we believe at that point, the educators towards the end of the month will be on the vaccination list, and we're just really excited for that. We sent out a communication to the faculty and support staff of confirming that they want a vaccine, because it's, there's a lot more procedures in place with the ordering, so you got to make sure you're ordering a specific number of vaccinations, because obviously they don't want any of the vaccinations to go to waste. So I'm just really proud of all the work of Kathy Ricchio, the mayor, and in our community to, you know, once again, just try to, you know, do the best that we can and provide the safest environment as possible for our faculty, support staff, students, and families. And this is just another step in the right direction. So we're excited about that, and I'm not sure, Mayor, if you wanted to follow up on any of that, but.
No, I'm, thank you, Sean, no, I agree, I think that, I'm really pleased with Cataldo, we were able to tap into the CARES money that we received, you know, as part of the, you know, stimulus packages for the states and municipalities, and we use that for the testing. We tested 315, 317 staff and had only one positive, which was really good news, which means, and things are trending in the city in the right direction also. So we're clearly moving in the direction that we want to be in. And so we had a conversation with Cataldo, who has been there running the Fenway site, certainly have a lot of experience, they're working with several other school districts. And when we had a conversation with them, they said that they could set it up at the Knock-Mullen Gym, where they did the testing previously, and be able to provide the first vaccine the end of February, the second vaccine, as you know, the Moderna, which is what Cataldo has access to, will be on the end of March. And so then we wait a few weeks, and hopefully we'll see some relaxation of the guidelines in terms of the distances of desks, et cetera. And our goal is to get more and more students back in, hopefully by April vacation. So I'm really, really pleased. Again, we needed to reach out to teachers and staff to find out, you know, because obviously this is voluntary, if you want to take the vaccine, and because you, they will be ordering beginning of next week, and then they'll know whether or not they can get appropriate doses. This has been the biggest issue, is trying to get the, to get vaccines for each of these sites that want to administer it. So we've got a good plan, and now we just have to wait and see. Once we have, the numbers are in, I think today, in terms, or by tomorrow, of staff who are interested in receiving the vaccine, and then we'll put their request in with Cataldo to hopefully be able to obtain the vaccines we need to be able to do this. So very exciting that we're able to do this.
Great.
Great news, Sean, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, time for public comments. If you would like to comment, ask that you raise your hand in the Zoom interface, and then when I say your name, if you could just state your name and your address, and if you could keep it between two and three minutes, that would be great. Looks like first person we have is Amy LeBlanc, Ms. LeBlanc.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay, hello, my name is Amy LeBlanc, and I am a parent of a kindergartner in Cohort C at the Brezner Head. Recently, there was three weeks of remote learning, which started on December 21st through January 15th. I first wanted to start off by saying how wonderful the teachers and staff have been, and how low the numbers have been, especially my kid, my son's teaching team, Mrs. Carroll, they have been amazing. And I also work in a school, and I understand how these unprecedented times, that it's hard to get all the kids in. But during this remote time, my son is on an extensive IEP, he's in Cohort C, he's in Cohort C for a reason, he's supposed to be full day school and receive in-class time plus his services. He was remote the whole time, he had a lot of difficulty with keeping focus, he has vision issues where he has to have a larger screen, he was focusing not on the screen. I understand that there's approximately 150 kids across the district that are in Cohort C, and with the schools empty, for the most part, except for those sub-separate classrooms, I don't see why we can't spread the kids out amongst the schools and have those instructional assistants helping those kids that are in Cohort C. My son has developmental delays, he may not have behavior problems or other severe medical problems that cause him to have a hard time with education, but he does have a vision issue and focus issues. So I have one question, why is it okay for a student who has vision concerns and focus issues and is in Cohort C to be allowed to be out of school and do remote learning? Thank you for your time, and I hope that the future we have remote learning again, that it's not a, not a snow day related, that we can have all Cohort C kids in the buildings.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc, can you just give us your address, please?
Sure, sorry, it's 18 Woodman Way, Apartment 1.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else? I see we have a bunch of people in the audience, does anybody else have a public comment? Seeing none, we can move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from the 4th and from the 13th, which was our retreat. Can I get a motion to approve?
Both.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, this is my first meeting, so I'm seeing what I could do here without really messing it up.
Next, we have, excuse me, Mr. Callahan, don't forget discussion before the vote.
Oh yes, discussion, I even have it written down, sorry about that.
That's okay. That's okay, we already voted, go on.
We'll try to have the next one.
All right, next up, we have the NHS student, Ms. Sierra Leahy, report, Ms. Leahy.
Yes, hello everyone. First off, we'd like to say congratulations to Tyler Cowles, John Donovan, Caroline Doyle, Emma Keith, Oliver Pons, Zach Wilson, and Coach Sarah Ledbeater on winning the state real-world design challenge competition. As explained in the release issued by the Aeronautics Division of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, this year's challenge was to design unmanned aircraft system, otherwise known as a drone, create a theory of operation, and develop a business plan for the commercial operations for safe package delivery in an urban quarter setting. This year's state challenge was particularly difficult. Winning the state challenge distinguishes these students as being among the nation's best and brightest. The Newburyport team will now compete against national and international challengers in a virtual format for the top award. Newburyport High School continues to engage in its dialogue around the text, "Just Mercy", and on the evening of February 10th, I believe, February 10th, will run a dialogue for the community. Several community groups have been reading the book alongside the students, and during February 10th event, teachers who have been trained by essential partners will facilitate the conversation for the community participants. Regarding sports, the winter sports teams continue to do well. Boys and girls basketball and boys hockey are undefeated. Girls hockey, which is in its inaugural season, is 2-2 and 1, and are coming off a great win against Masco. Boys and girls swim are both 3-1, boys ski is 1-2, and girls ski is 2-2, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much, and I realize I just forgot, Steve Cole, Mr. Cole, you have warrants for us.
Yeah, we have three warrants. The first warrant, I moved at the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $1,663.85 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment, there are no conflicts.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
The next warrant, I moved at the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $17,595.38 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account, there are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None?
And the last warrant, I moved at the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $291,686.22 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment, there are no conflicts.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion?
Too late.
All right, all right, look at that. Number five, the international trip to Greece with Principal Wolf, yes, Mayor?
You, we did the remote, I mean, the retreat minutes, but don't we have minutes from January 4th, too?
I did say the 4th, did we have to do them as separate?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to go back and do?
The retreat minutes.
Do you want to approve the minutes from the retreat on January 13th, a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, right, okay. All right, Mr. Wolf?
Okay, thanks, Brian, yeah, so I just wanted to come back again, so we're at that point in time where we, earlier in the year, we had spoken about the Australian trip and canceling that trip, but I think we're at the point now with the Greece, we recognized because there was not going to be a change in what families would lose if we were in need of canceling the trip, because we had already passed a certain deadline that we wanted to just wait and see. And so we're at that point, realizing that the trip is not going to be as viable. And Ms. McConie, having met with all of the families involved with the trip, so it appears that many families are going to be taking the voucher. And so what we're looking to do is to seek a postponement of the Greece trip from this school year to 2022, to the fall.
So moved.
Second?
Everybody have a opinion on their approving to move the Greece trip to, I guess, April of 2022?
Correct.
Just, I had a question for Andy, if I could.
Sure.
Andy, how many, you know, it's obviously nobody's fault, except COVID's fault, but how many kids have sort of matriculated out of this during the time between now and the 22nd? We're graduating kids who were planning on going on the trip.
Right, there were originally 28 students who were part of the trip originally, and so now we're down to 12 students who have stayed with it, 16 have already elected to take the vouchers. Now, some of them are not all seniors who have elected to take the voucher, because we're also using EF for the Galapagos trip, so students may even be able to use their voucher from this trip to go on the Galapagos. Others may still just elect to take the Greece trip come April next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Principal Wolf? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, so now the kids get to go to Greece next year.
Next year, thank you very much.
Next, we have Steve Cole with the finance report from our meeting on whatever date that was.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the, let's hang on for a second. Yeah, the meeting was on January 19th, January 19th, 2021. Basically, I know I've distributed the minutes to everybody, are there any questions?
Nope.
I mean, pretty much we reviewed status of fundraising, I think there was six fundraising projects for classes of 20 to 21. We went over the food service, financial loss update, and a lot of that's got to do with lack of participation due to the COVID, which also translates into fewer meals being reimbursed from the federal government. We did do some transfers, again, some of those to strengthen food service, and some of those to strengthen software needs due to remote learning. And in terms of the second quarter expense reports, everything's in pretty good shape. Any cost centers that need to be, need to have limits, such as the Knock Middle School, those freezes are in place.
Quick question, you said one of the fundraisers went up to six, they're raising up to $6,000?
Yeah.
What?
What was it?
It piqued my interest, like.
No, it was a golf tournament to benefit boys soccer.
Golf tournament to benefit boys soccer?
Yeah.
So the boys soccer team is raising $6,000?
Through that golf tournament, yes.
Okay.
That was Sean Blues thing, right?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions?
Do we know if that's, I guess, I don't know, like, how deeply we're talking about these, but do we know?
I believe, yeah, I mean, from what I see, there is no revenue produced, so I believe that it was not held. It was scheduled for October 18th, so I'm assuming that it doesn't show, it says anticipated revenue $6,000, but no actual revenue. So I guess we don't have actual numbers on it yet, we can certainly try to find out to see if it did occur, but pretty much zeros on that line.
I mean, ultimately, that was just the sort of thing we were trying to figure out, like, if our boys soccer team has $6,000 less than what they need to operate, that sounds like a significant amount of money.
Yeah, well, they were, yeah, well, they were looking to get new uniforms, practice shirts, jackets, and awards, so we can, you know, find out more specifically, you know, if there's any revenue that was generated to support those.
Steve, can we bring that up at the next finance subcommittee meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just can, can I just ask one quick, another quick question? It says that their decreased participation due to the pandemic has caused fewer reimbursed meals from the federal government, which makes it sound as if that that added to the, to the, I guess, deficit of food services?
Well, that's part of it, I mean, if we have, if we have a full, you know, our typical participation of, for, you know, meals is roughly between 43% and 48%. If we have that full participation, then we're going to generate more refunds from the federal government for school lunch program, you know, free lunch and/or reduced lunch. And because we're not getting that, that's going to affect, again, the bottom line there.
But if we're not getting that, we wouldn't make that food, would we? Like, are we, are we giving out food that we're not being reimbursed for, I guess that's my question?
No, it's just that, that whenever you do a meal like that, you're going to get a good percentage, if not all of it, back. So that's not coming in on the, on the revenue side of things.
But it's not going out on the cost side of things either?
No, but, but we're still, we're still making meals. The thing is, because participation is down, it's not as many, there's just, there's not be reimbursed, or fewer meals to be reimbursed.
Okay, so I, well, I guess that's my question, so is the, is the money that we get reimbursed from the government more than the cost of the meal? Is that why there's a deficit caused by the?
I, I couldn't tell you exact costs, but I can just tell you that when, say you have, say you have 100 students, okay, and say 40 of them, or say 25, are getting reduced meals, okay? And so say your participation rate drops in half, so instead of 75-25, you have 37 and 12. So you're going to have fewer kids buying lunch, you're going to have fewer kids being reimbursed, that means you're going to have less revenue, period. So your, your, your food costs may stay the same, but you're not, you're not, you're not, if you will, providing meals and bringing revenue to the school lunch balance line.
Okay, Sean, weren't we reimbursed for more meals this year? Like, I thought the government was actually reimbursing more meals than usual this year, whether or not the kids qualified organically for Title I.
Yeah, so I think, Brian, I think Nancy's.
Yeah, I've been trying to get her into the panelists, but Nancy, I think you can talk now, are you able to talk?
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, we do get reimbursed for every meal we sell, you know, that we have, that is across the board for all schools in Massachusetts right now. With less students in, we're not issuing that many lunches, so obviously our reimbursements are down. But we are working on breakfast right now to increase. So this month, the month of January, we had a 3,000 count in breakfast compared to 1,900 in December, which had fewer days. Only 1,000 breakfast last year in January. So the food services is doing all they can to make the revenue up in other ways, we'll get reimbursed for breakfast always as we go along. So what we're trying to do is, as students come into school, we give them a bagged breakfast so that they can have it during their break, or their snack, or whatever they need it for. We encourage kids to get lunch, but a lot of children are bringing their own when they come, and we only have half the students in at a time, so the lunch count is down, while the cost for staffing is still high, even though we furloughed four, we still have the same expenses. I hope that explains it a little bit.
That does, thank you. So the cost of the reimbursement is not just for the lunch, it's for the, the cost of running the program, it helps us.
Yep.
Okay. That makes sense, thank you.
Because of the hybrid you're serving.
Yep.
Yep, half the lunches during the day, so.
All right, is anybody else any questions about that?
I think.
Mayor Holliday?
I just wanted to ask a question about, I know that Nancy, you just mentioned that we have furloughed staff, but why is that not impacting our bottom line?
It does a little bit.
Excuse me, I thought we did it at the beginning of December.
We did, we furloughed four cafeterias. They're collecting unemployment, obviously, so we have to pay the unemployment cost. But we still have, like, longevity was just paid out in December, so that's a high cost for the cafeteria. We've reduced some of the hours on the staffing now as well, but we're trying to guarantee the full timers, I think we cut it by two hours a day or a week, I can't remember exactly. So we're doing what we can to save on the staffing costs, but we still have the food costs, and our staffing costs are high, it's nothing to do with the, anything different that we're doing this year. The amount we're saving is just not making up for the amount of lost lunches.
And Mayor, we're not the, this is, this is throughout the Commonwealth, when we have our superintendent meetings and meetings with the commissioner, this is a, it's a big problem because of the reimbursement from the federal government with the lunch program, so.
We're actually a lot better off than I thought we would be at this time of year. And now breakfast is picking up, I think that, you know, for the end of the February, the piano will look a little bit better. The other thing that I wanted to let the school committee know is that the state just issued today that the food service contract will be extended for one more year through June of '22.
Right.
Instead of going out for an RFP on a year similar to last year's, where there's really no way to calculate costs and revenue, they've decided to let the districts extend their current contracts.
So we're offering breakfast to all kids?
Yeah, and as they come in, we have a bagged breakfast for them, and the amount of students that are taking it is definitely increasing significantly.
That's good, and Sean, we've been able to work out a ways for students to eat that? Because I know, like, there are different rules for when kids are eating versus when kids are just in class, so teachers, or somehow we've managed to work out a system where kids can have a breakfast or a snack or something?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But they're, as you know, like, the Knock-Mullen, for example, they split, so some of the students are utilizing the cafeteria while other students are eating in the classrooms.
I know that's how they do it for lunch, I was curious about this, the breakfast, like, if they get a bagged lunch in the, in the morning on their way in the door, what do they, what do they do with it for a couple hours until?
They're going into the classrooms and eating.
And they can eat without their masks on, there's space to do that?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, it seems that the number six comes before seven, and I didn't realize that, so apologies to Rosemary Turgeon and Greg Lynch, who are here to talk about their amended request for repairs to the tennis courts at the Knock. Guys?
Thank you, yeah, thanks for having us. We just wanted to circle back, it's been a year since the last time we came before you. At the time, Greg and I had done some initial research about getting the dilapidated courts over at the Knock, renovated, resurfaced, totally redone, so that they can be used by students, by athletic teams, and by the community at large. So you guys did give us, if you, if you recall, you did give us the green light to go ahead and start, start the process. So Greg and I have really just been shepherding it and facilitating it towards, towards where we are now. We've worked with Lisa Reed at the Parks Department. We did submit a grant to the Moral Society, I think, or Moral Foundation, which we did not get. The amount of money that we are asking for is $175,000, that's a complete cost for design, all of it, landscaping, you know, start to finish. So we are now going to apply for the CPA grant, CPA funding. Again, we are working with the Parks Department to write the grant and pull the pieces together, they are going to submit it, you know, on our behalf. And the reason we wanted to circle back with you all is because, since last year and now, there has been some discussion with the athletic director at the high school, and just with some other people about potentially upgrading this to a five-court project. Again, currently, we, our intention is just to get funding to renovate the two courts that are there. Re, you know, reposition them so that they fit in their regulation-sized tennis courts. So I guess Greg and I just wanted to come before you one more time and ask if that's still, you know, the right direction to go in. The, the grant application is due this week, so timing is everything. But again, our intention is to, to request two courts. We just wanted to make sure that that was sort of the school committee and the district's, you know, best use of resources. Again, we're a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've spoken with some, um, some folks at the CPC, and they feel like it's a good project, it's manageable, it's, 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 you know, it's sort of different from what they've been funding the past couple of years, and the amount being requested is not sky-high. If we were to jump to a five-court scenario, that, um, the funding probably wouldn't be fully provided by the CPC, so we'd have to seek alternatives for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you want something, Greg?
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we're cautiously optimistic about getting a good result for the two courts, and that's where we started. But like Rosie said, through the discussions, five courts was, was discussed, which is, would be wonderful. I know that's a big ask, but that would solve the problem of having a varsity match where you can have, you need five courts. So I guess we're here today to ask permission, if, you know, we were to tackle that initiative and be able to secure funding for three more courts down the road, could we have permission to put three more courts on that piece at, at, at the Knock? Right?
Superintendent, do you wanna talk about the idea you had when you were walking around the grounds, just about the, and if there was opportunity for the extra courts, where, where they may or may not be able to go?
Sure. So I, um, thank you for your presentation, because it, it sounds like the, the original project was to upgrade those, the two existing courts, which makes a lot of sense. You know, I heard the potential of five courts, and so as I was walking the building, and this is just, you know, taking a look at different areas. The side of where the basketball courts are in that grass, if you're looking at Low Street, that front where the students have recess, was that land also kind of looked at as potential for tennis courts in that area too? I wasn't sure.
Well, we had originally, again, we started with the two courts when we sort of scoped out five. What seemed in, in that moment to make the most sense was to put them, using that same space, but spreading over to the softball, softball field. So they would physically fit there, but it would permanently take away, I think the points have been made, permanently take away that
That field space, yeah. Kyle mentioned that it, that field's not really being used. I mean, it's sort of just like spillover for the other fields. So that's kind of where that started. But again, I understand that once it's gone, it's gone.
Right.
So.
So I, I mean, it looks like, you know, for, for the discussion, you know, it looks like on that other side, the idea, I think you could fit five tennis courts on the other side. And then with the possible, you know, if you, i- i- if you're doing construction on the tennis courts, renovation of that, that area where the students have recess, might be something that, you know, that we also take a look at. But I didn't, I mean, that was just the former A.D. in me, looking at, you know, as you said, once you take a field away, the field's gone forever. But if you could preserve that, because you don't know, five, ten years from now, you might be renovating that field for something. But it looks like there's a lot of space on the other side of the Knock.
Yeah.
Might be able to accommodate, you know, the, the tennis, a tennis court facility.
Okay, but you, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be thrilled about the idea of putting it on the softball field?
I think if we are gonna go to, I, I mean, I'm just the superintendent, so I'm not, the school committee's gonna make the decision. But I think if, if we were gonna look at a five-court facility, I would like to see if, you know, that, that might be the spot where it has to go, where the softball field is at this time. But I think if we explore the land on the other side, that, that also might be a a spot for a tennis facility too.
Okay.
But it's just, you know, just a thought process and kind of looking, you know, at Google Maps and trying to fit tennis courts. It does look if you could, you could put a nice little tennis facility on, on that side also, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, we just want to throw that out there to the school committee, because five courts would be, would be ideal. Two is great. We're happy with this. We never intended to even ask this question. But just wanted to, you know, have the school committee discuss, because that's basically a fundamental requirement for a varsity tennis team is to have five courts. So the, the school can't have, again, they have Atkinson, they have three courts there, and they've been staggering the times and stuff. So the two will certainly help, but it's a separate location, so it's not ideal. And there's a huge community demand. There's the Newbury Portu Services, there's, there's pickleballers, which is a whole nother thing we don't need to get into right now, but just wanted to kind of throw that out there, if that's something that we could be done to allocate some additional space there for some extra courts. Just, that's what we're here to, to ask.
Uh, looks like we have some questions. I'm gonna go alphabetically. Mayor Holliday?
Thank you. Question for Greg and Rosemary. Do the five courts have to be contiguous? Do they have to be together? I mean, if you did renovate the two courts that exist now, and then you were able to say, put three courts over on the other side of Knock-Mullen, would that suffice?
I would say so for sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and not at the same time, Mayor Holliday? So like, one now?
I'm just really worried, because, you know, again, during the pandemic, budgets, crisis, where we are, grants, you know, contributions being requested. I mean, a lot of the traditional fundraising that we do and contributions from the banks, I mean, they're really trying to help businesses. It's a hard time, as I'm sure you've realized in terms of raising funds. And I think it makes a lot more sense to start with the two, because that means raising seventy-five is something that is within the realm as opposed to doubling that. You know, I'm sure that, you know, it becomes a little more efficient when you do, you know, five courts as opposed to two at once, but it's still gonna be over probably three, three fifty in order to do that. So I think that that's a real hard reach, especially if you're only at, uh, asking for a grant from a hundred thousand from the CPA, and there's no guarantee that it will be funded at this point. So I think to start there and then, you know, get those done, and, you know, let's continue working on the fundraising. And if you can, apply next year if you get this one again for CPA and maybe additional, you know, opportunities we would look at. I know the Moral Foundation, we've asked for them over several years to do Atkinson, to upgrade those facilities, and they're just not, the foundation's not keen on tennis courts, what can I say? So I would recommend that you work on the two at this, in this juncture with this climate. And I really appreciate, you know, your efforts to work on this project. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Bruce Menon?
Thank you. I'll just, I'll just toss my two cents in here. It, it, you know, I, I appreciate what the mayor is saying, but I also, realistically, it's gonna cost a lot more to do two and then three as opposed it is, as what it would cost to do five at the same time, if you're gonna, you know, if you have the space to do that. My inclination is, is to move to the, to the front part of the Knock with anticipation of, of getting five courts in there. And it, I, I don't know, and you're the athletic director, but the, the, the two courts that we currently have in somewhat dilapidated condition, could those be renovated down the road and become pickleball courts? I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, sure. Theoretically, yeah.
There's funding, sure.
Yeah.
I think it's a harder sell for ten, for pickleball courts as part of the school. It's less of a school, you know, sport. I think kids in gym might play tennis. I'm not sure they're gonna play pickleball. A paved space is, is useful for gym for, you know, many ways. So it, it could be.
I mean, my understanding is that there is a demand in the community for those kind of courts.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Huge.
So, so my inclination again is for cost efficiency and, and for placement is, is to be on the other side, which actually originally was the site recommended for the skate park way back when.
Okay.
But, you know, there's a lot of space there. You know, Sean is talking about doing some renovations to the basketball court area that enhances the ability of kids to play, then there might be ways to bundle some of what we're doing. But it's just my thought.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bruce. Sean Rudin?
Yeah, I mean, just first, thanks for all the work you're putting in on this. As a former Newbury Port varsity tennis player, you know, I, I've done the walk, I've done the walk from Atkinson to middle school, back when we could play on those courts. And that's what we would do, like our JV matches. It's a challenge. I know, you know, the boys' tennis program is down, but I know numbers coming up. I know I see Greg at, at, at the racket club, and I know, you know, there's a huge interest right now in tennis, which is great to see. I know the girls' team had like fifty-five kids last year come out, and, you know, you can have twelve kids on a court play at a time. So, you know, having, having a bigger space for that would be, would be huge for those kids, and would really change the program. And I like Bruce's idea. I like maybe, and I love this, approaching the, the CPC funds. I think, you know, they don't do recreation as much, so I think this would be a very attractive program for them to be interested in. And I, I do think it benefits the whole community. And, you know, maybe, maybe it's a two-year plan where, where you, you put it in that area on Low Street where, you know, we'd like to get five courts in two years, and maybe it, it turns into a, a two-year grant process. But I think you do have the space over there, and I just, I think it'd be a great, great program to get behind.
Great.
All right, I guess my question is, in terms of the motion to take a vote, from what I understand, the CPA requires that we have given the permission before they allow them to fill the paperwork out? So do we do a motion to have it kind of be open-ended, whatever this group thinks is best for them and what, what they're able to, to afford, or or do we have to say one or the other right now before they can file the paperwork this week?
Can I say something? I think, I think our best approach is to, to write the grant in the way that we want to see this play out. I mean, does this school, does, does the district want two courts? And, and I sort of feel like that's the easier path. I think the likelihood of getting funding for two courts is, is probable. But as a district, if we want five courts, I think the decision should be made, and that's how the grant should be written. So I think it's up to you all, with Greg and I, help hopefully, to decide, is it a two-court plan or a five-court? And I, I just think that's the longer road. I think, to, to the points that have been made, I, I think economically, over time, it makes more sense, but I think finding the money might be harder. But I would love to see five courts, and I would fully support that. I just, we, we, Greg and I have worked with Lisa Reed and Nancy London at City Hall, and they cautioned us on the five-court path. I just want to be honest, they felt that, that might be a bigger project than the CPC wants to take on. So that's sort of where Greg and I netted out, but we fully support five courts, and we're willing to put the work in. Again, it's just gonna be a, a longer road.
And Mayor Holliday, we can, or they can rather use that land basically all the way to Toppin's Lane, is that? I mean, I've seen it on the map, but I don't know if it's an accurate lot drawing.
I'm not sure that it's big enough, to be honest. Like, I, I walked it as well, and I could be wrong, but it might have to encroach on the basketball courts a little bit, but if there's, we could get, we could figure that out for sure. We could find out with certainty if that's even possible, but I'm, uh, not sure you can fit it there.
You certainly, uh, you know, that is part of school property, so the school committee can vote to, you know, allow you to, you know, build on that particular site, certainly.
I kind of don't know. I, I'd guess, what, what do you guys want us to motion, to vote on, the five or the two, or?
I think so. I think that's what we need. We just need to, we need your support in one direction or the other.
Hey, Brian?
Bruce have questions?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Dave and Bruce. Dave, you wanna go?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just a little concerned switching to a, a vote for a five-court without really seeing a plan for it.
We do have a plan for it.
Well, I, I don't doubt that you do. It sounds like you guys put in a ton of work. I just, we haven't seen, we haven't seen it, we haven't heard it, like, discussed. I'm also concerned, to tell you the truth, with, with regards to funding, I know just down the street from there, we're still halfway somewhere into turning our track into a place where we can hold big track meets, which is also great. And some, somewhere, I don't know if we're gonna be pitting the track community against the tennis community when it comes to raising funds to finish a project. And whether or not we should be focusing on one project at a time. And so it sounds like, while I understand that it'd be great to start the five-court project, and, and whatever, I'm all for it if we had the funds. So I'm, I'm just trying to think realistically here. Because, I, I, and I don't really know where that project is either, but at some point, you know, the friends of the track are gonna start asking the city and the, and the community and the school district for some money. Right?
Yeah.
That, that's all. And so if we're in the scope of being able to get two courts done, then, you know, I think, I think we should maybe take that win. Even though we might, we might want to try for three more courts on the property somewhere at some point.
Yeah, I'm in total agreement. I think we should move forward, personally, I think we should move forward with the two, but I guess if we could earmark some space, if there's a way to put a motion on that to space for three additional, because I think you're right, the five is probably, even though it makes more sense to do it all at once, it's probably not gonna happen that way.
Uh, Mr. Menon?
Yeah, I, you know, again, it's gonna be, I, I see it as a multi-year project. You know, I'm not so, I'm, I, I'm not so concerned about, you know, three in one spot, two in the other, as I am losing the field. So, so that's, that's my sort of main concern. You know, it, it's taken a while for soccer to become very big, but it's big enough. Who knows what the next sport's gonna be? I, I don't know, but you know, once the field is gone, it's gone. So, so, you know, I, I would certainly be willing to vote on a motion to build the courts with the plan that you've got to renovate those two courts and, and put in exploring three more courts on the other side. But I, I don't want to leave the, I just don't want to lose that whole field. So I'm, I'm, I don't want it to be two now, and then we'll build another three in the same spot.
Right, right. That makes sense.
Bruce, do you want to make that motion?
Let me see if I can. I move that the school committee give permission to the tennis group, whatever it is called.
Friends of Newbury Port tennis.
Tennis to, to restore the two courts adjacent to the softball field and to explore building three additional courts on the, on the Low Street, Toppin's Lane piece of land.
Second?
Right.
Mayor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes seven nil.
Yeah, and I, if I could just add one more thing, you know, sit down with, with the superintendent or whoever else you need to sit down with, and walk that land and see how you fit three in. Because I, I think that, that, I, I think a multi-tiered, multi-year plan is, is, again, the way to go. But it's up to you.
Well, no, I, I think that's great advice, and I thought the way we can write the grant is to say the funding is for now two courts. But we have the intent of working with the school to develop it further. That's great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. For all the work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You.
All right. Next, we have fundraising policy by Sheila Spalding, the second reading and vote. Is Spalding?
Yes, do you, I physically read these to you, or have you all had a chance to read them? They start on page twenty in our meeting packet. Would you like me to read something? The first
I, I'm familiar with them. It's, I think it's up to policy subcommittee people if you want to read them.
Okay, so we haven't made any changes since our first reading. And there is one correction that needs to be made to the student fundraising policy. It's just a typo. It says, can Policy is just a typo. It says canning instead of canvassing in paragraph five. We will correct that. But did anybody have any other changes, edits or discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
And do we go through these one by one? Cause there's three policies here.
They're all separate votes?
They are. That's right. So the first is crowdfunding and that's on page 20 of the packet. It's pretty short. I can pull it up and read it to you.
All right.
Um, employees seeking to use crowdfunding campaign to benefit the school district must obtain the approval of the superintendent. Crowdfunding includes the solicitation of goods, services or money from a large number of people. Through any physical or electronic medium, including without limitation, through any online service or other electronic network such as GoFundMe, Kickstarter. Indie GoGo, YouCaring and Donors Choose.
And this is going to be a standard motion?
That's right, to adopt this.
All right, so who adopt the policy as written?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of adopting policy G E B, G B E B D as written?
Any further discussion first?
Sorry. Any further discussion?
Bruce, did you raise your hand?
No, no, I thought.
Okay.
I was, I was, I was stumped.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Hearing none. Um.
Great.
What do you want to do, KCD that one?
Um, yep, I'm going to move on. Public gifts to the schools. The superintendent will have authority to accept gifts and offers of equipment for the schools in the name of the committee. When the gift is of educational value. In the case of gifts from industry, business or special interest groups. No extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any donation to the schools without school committee approval. For the purpose of this policy, extensive will mean something that community members can be exposed to both consistently and prominently. Gifts that would involve changes in school plans or sites will be subject to school committee approval. Gifts will automatically become the property of the school system. Any gift of cash, whether or not intended by the donor for a specific purpose. Will be accepted by vote of the school committee, handled as a separate account and expended at the discretion of the committee as provided by law. The committee directs the superintendent to assure that an appropriate expression of thanks is given to all donors.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? None. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None passes seven, nothing. And the next one is file JJE student fundraising.
All right. I'm going to read this with the correction in it as it should read and it will read. While the school committee recognizes that fundraising activities have become a part of the school environment at all levels. The committee wishes to ensure that students are not exploited by the process. The committee supports student involvement in the sale of tickets to scheduled athletic events. Cool, dramatic and musical performances and other school events where sales are required. Also, publications which require the sale of advertising to sustain themselves and serve the student body and/or the community. May involve students in such sales. Charitable fundraising activities, especially those that are part of a community service event or program. Are encouraged provided such proposals are submitted to and approved by both the, the, the building principal and the superintendent. Other fundraising activities that wish to involve students in the fundraising process shall be submitted to the superintendent for approval. For safety reasons and because the school committee recognizes that community members receive requests for support from many worthy causes. Activities such as canvassing and door-to-door sales are strongly discouraged. No money collections of any kind may be held in the schools without the specific consent of the superintendent.
I view, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And the motion passes seven to nothing. Awesome. All right. Um.
I, could I make a point?
Sure.
I, I, uh, had my hand raised for discussion and was.
Sorry.
Hold on for the middle, uh, the middle vote. We have already voted. It is passed. I would ask the chair to change my vote to abstain because I didn't get a chance to discuss it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Menon. So now we have six in favor and one abstention for file. That's KCD, correct?
That's right.
All right.
Can I ask, can I ask what the, what Mr. Menon's point was just for future discussion and? Even if the votes passed it.
There were the same issues I raised, the policy being, I'm not going to raise them again.
Good. All right.
To address, um, or just draw your attention to the two other forms that are included in this. So page 23, which is just the fundraising permission form. That would be given out to each organization. They would have to fill out. And then on the next page is the NPS fundraising project form checklist. Did anybody have any questions or comments or corrections for those?
Um, I just have a question. Um, where are these? I, I know that we had a, um. Like a shortlist of the finance subcommittee about these, but are these going to be publicly posted anywhere, uh, superintendent? You're muted.
Regarding the different fundraising in each building?
Yeah, like the, the forms, if a bunch of groups do it, are they going to be publicly accessible or just by request?
Yeah, I think we can make them publicly accessible. I think, you know, we have, right now the principals and the administration. Um, and each building has them and it's been handing them out for people that want to do fundraising. But we can definitely just make them accessible also, because you still need permission from the administration and then eventually, um. You know, my, myself, so.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Excuse me, Brian?
Yes.
I just want to let you know that this permission form is posted on the website. It's on the athletic site. And it's under forms on the, on our district main page.
Excellent. Thank you.
Forms.
Thanks.
There you go.
Great.
All right. Uh, number nine, also Ms. Spalding, uh, the response to the letter from mask and mask to Governor Baker.
Yes, this is just a further revision of Dave Hawkeizer's original letter. Um, did everybody have an opportunity to read it? Would you like me to read it again?
I don't think you have to read it again unless somebody wants to. I knew it was in the packet. So people can see it.
Any comments, questions?
This is going to be a vote. Are we voting to do this as all of us as one body or? We are doing it? All right. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the letter as written, signed for by all of us?
So moved.
Go move. Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, I have, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep, Mr. Cole?
Yeah, I have one minor change. Uh. Don't have the letter in front of me, but, uh, I believe it's the second paragraph. Where, uh, hang on for a second. Maybe Sheila, you can help me on this.
Yeah.
Like I sent it to you.
Yes. I have been writing what you said. If you just want to give a recap for the committee.
Yeah, I, I just think it's important to, uh, note that, uh, you know, our work is again, uh. Done in a collaborative way on behalf of the children and students. So there was a sentence in there. I just wanted to end with together on behalf of the children and students. It's the sentence that, uh.
I have it right here. Actually, do you want, do you want me to read it? What you, you suggested? Um, at the end of the sentence, beginning with, these school systems operate. To add together on behalf of the children and students.
They're all working together on behalf of, on the behalf of, you said children and students?
Yeah.
That's correct. Sounded good to me, Steve. I just wanted to run it by everybody.
Uh, does that motion stand then? If there's a, the slight edit?
As amended.
Bruce has a question.
Bruce, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm trying to run the meeting and know the text. I'm sorry.
That's what I was telling you.
Yeah.
Offer a friendly amendment. Um, and, um. Rather than children and students, I would say students and staff. It's a friendly amendment.
All right. So together on behalf of students and staff.
Sheila for the work that you did.
All right. So we're going to accept this motion as amended?
Yeah, I just want to ask, and, and again, I, I'll go for it as it, as is with the amendments, but. And the same thing I was going to ask about the redundancy of children and students, I would ask if we're saying that leadership and teachers. Are working on this together? Do we want to say they're working on together on behalf of staff? It doesn't. It just seems like we put them on both the receiving and the working. Side of that. So if we want to, if we want to separate out. District staff from diff, from district teachers, we can do that, but I would put them on the, on the working side so that. When it says the family, school committee, school leadership, teachers, staff and the state are all working together on behalf of students. Or if we want to put the staff on the other side, it just makes it seem as if the staff wasn't doing any of the work. So I'm just, I guess, Mr. Menon, if you could just clarify what your intention was.
My intention was that we're working on, um, behalf of the, the district staff and as well as the community, but. But I thought that children and, and students was, uh, was a little bit redundant. I wanted to make sure that, um. That we expressed that, um, that our work is, that we work together as a district. So that was my.
If I could just add, the only reason why I put children and students in there is that it's always been my understanding of the school committee members, that's the focus of our work. So. That's why I headed in there.
That, that's fine. I just, I was just trying to parse out the difference between children and students. I mean, we do have more children in Newburyport than we have students. So we could, we could, I mean, I could live with that.
Children, children are effectively students. I, I differentiate children and students because this, this ages. So I think. If you call, if you define them children and students, you es- essentially cover the whole age range, you know?
Okay.
An eighteen, an eighteen-year-old senior is would be a young adult, not a child, but that's, you know, we want to write a letter about that. We can.
And, and Mr. Menon, when you wanted to put staff. When you're saying the state are working together on behalf of staff. You want to put that on boats, put them on both sides of the, of the equation? Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. Whatever, whatever, uh, makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that, that again, that we were, um, expressing. Who we work with and why we're working with them. So I'm fine with that.
So do we want to, and. I mean, usually when I write something like this, I would take, um, school leadership and teachers. And staff, and I would put them all together by saying, um, you know, professional educators. As a, as a collective because. You know, for example, are we going to say that, that office staff is not working on behalf or, or do you want to say school leadership, teachers and staff? You know what I'm saying? Like it.
I think staff is more encompassing of everybody. Personally, and I, I actually do see Bruce's point of having staff because teachers can work for the benefit of. The entire staff. They do that all the time. So I don't think it's redundant actually, if you reread it.
I get that, but we could put both people, we could put, we could put families on that side of the equation too, right? We're working on behalf of the families. So I just like, we're either doing the work or receiving the work. Otherwise it reads like we're doing the work on behalf of ourselves. Whichever group that is.
Brian, I have a feeling you're not going to get your, your dollar at the end.
Um, just, I'm wondering at this point if, you know, with all, th- there seems to be a, a bunch of edits. Um, do we?
Not really. We're just talking about the same sentence and, and I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out where to list staff. And so we either listed, we either list staff after the word teachers. Which is personally where I think they belong because they're, they're working with everybody. And then I agree with Steve, that says we're doing the work on behalf of, and, and I have no problems listing children and students.
That works for me. Do we take another vote?
No, I can, um, modify my approval to accept the minor modification and friendly amendment of Bruce.
That's the motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Thank you, Sheila.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion passes seven to nothing. All right.
What do we do with this?
Say that again, Dave?
What do we do with that?
Put a stamp on it.
And.
You added two people listed.
Okay, so I guess.
Brian's going to hand deliver it.
Yeah.
I guess that's my question is who, who's, do we, do we have a process for doing something like this?
Yeah, does that go on, wouldn't go on district letterhead, would it? Because it's, we're not really.
Should have school committee letterhead though.
Yeah.
And then it couldn't be signed with the warrants. Does each individual member sign it?
Sure. Yeah, we could, we could do it that way or we could sign it as, uh, if you, if you, if you put in a notation that this was. You know, passed unanimously by vote of the school committee on a certain date, then we can just sign the Newburyport School Committee. But I think, I frankly think it's more powerful if we sign it.
Okay.
Way.
Sign it, mail it.
All right.
So Sean, can you, um, get this printed on school committee letterhead for us?
Yes.
And then once it's ready, if, um, Joanne could let us know that it's outside on the table and that we could all come by. You know, whenever it's ready and, and sign it and get it ready to mail.
Perfect. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Should be signed four copies of it, one for each person listed in the address.
Sure.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Menon, you have the school committee retreat recap.
Yeah. Um, I, first off, I wanted to, um, uh, thank Joanne, uh, for, for doing such a great job on capturing the conversation in the minutes. That she provided for us. So I think, given that that is part of the packet. Um, and I, I, I know that we have sent out a little late, but we have sent out all the information that Dorothy sent us. Um, I would ask. Lieutenant Gallagher to post that on the school committee website as well, so that the community can see some of those documents. Um, I'll just briefly, briefly summarize it because it's, it's all really summarized there. Um, we had Dorothy Presser from the Mass Association of School Committees come in and do. Workshop with staff that had actually. That had actually been scheduled a year ago and was postponed twice because of COVID. Um, and the workshop had to do with roles and responsibilities and, uh, you know, sort of a better understanding of. Uh, what, what, uh, our job is and what the superintendent's job is. So a lot of things I think that, um, that were very helpful. Had to do with sort of clarifying, uh, what our relationship with the superintendent is. That, um, we are the governing body and that the superintendent is the executive who administers the schools. Um, and that makes for a pretty clear definition of the things that the school committee should be doing. Um, which really has to do with, um, you know, the budget. Hiring and evaluating the superintendent and make sure that we're creating policies that, um, we, that makes sure that the district is providing each student. Every student with, uh, with an equitable and the richest educational experience that they could possibly have. That, um, that as we create these policies, the role of the superintendent is to, um, to implement them. That we're not, we're not an implementing body, but we are a body that, that, um, has a, a lot of work to do around the policies and vision of the district. And I think, you know, unless you guys want to add more to that, I think that that was probably, um, probably the key understanding. Again, I think the, the minutes that, um, Joanne took really captured in a very rich way. What we, what our conversation was and, uh, the documents that Dorothy provided for us, I think also provide, um, clarity on what I've just summarized.
Does that sound good to me? Thank you very much. All right. Moving on. Number eleven.
Brian, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, so just through that, I just remembered that there, that retreat night, we went pretty late, uh, especially with the, with the mask, uh, woman. Um, and I know, I, I know I, I, there was at least one agenda item that we didn't get to that night, uh, you know, mostly around what kind of public forums or, um. Working meetings we'd like to try to schedule this year. And we were going to talk about topics. Can we make sure that's added at some point?
Yes. Um, yeah, I had it, I had it written down here and I didn't, I didn't, uh, I didn't remember to say it. Um, that one of the follow-up things we need to do is, is that conversation about the calendar. Um, and looking at Mike Lukin's work and, um, uh. reorganizing our meetings along the lines of workshops and business meetings. So that should definitely, that should definitely probably go on a school committee agenda. To.
And I know one of the, one of the topics I was going to suggest was around diversity, equity, inclusion, that coalition for a public forum, which kind of ties into our next our next topic as well.
Okay. Sean Riordan, renaming Rupert A. Knock middle school discussion.
Yeah, so and I think, and I might as well, again, I want this to be a discussion, so I guess I should just ask committee members, but did everyone get a chance to read Charlie Cullen's letter to the paper a couple of weeks ago following Frank Cousins Jr.'s MLK speech at Unitarian Church on January seventeenth?
Yep.
Everyone did? Okay, all right. I just wanted to just want to make sure. So I mean, again, I was trying to find the recording to send it to people that didn't because I was invited to to listen in that day and and heard Frank speak. I had met with Frank weeks prior about a number of issues, but we talked a lot about, you know, equity issues in Newburyport and growing up here and some of his experiences. And so that's why he invited me to to hear him speak that day. And one of the events he referenced was something that happened to his father, you know, in nineteen forty one graduate of Newburyport High. And it was, I was fascinated because I never heard that story before, you know, someone who's, you know, I got, I'm a fifth generation new reporter and that I just had never heard that. I just was surprised. And when Frank told the story, he never mentioned who the principal was that day. He never mentioned who the the student was who who called his dad out of line and and then was made to to walk at the back of the graduation line. But, you know, again, it, you know, he, it fit into some of the themes that that Frank Junior was talking about that day. So Charlie Cullen graduated nineteen sixty nine from Newburyport High, you know, did did some research and decided to write a letter to the Daily News, which you all read. And, you know, learning that the principal that day was was Rupert A. Knock was honestly kind of shocking. And I don't know much about Rupert Knock. It was before my time. I just know what a profound impact that one decision had on, you know, really probably a generation of of new reporters. You know, I've been talking to Charlie and Frank a lot over the past couple of weeks since 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 all this came out. And, you know, really just the revelation of this coming out the way it did has really freed up, you know, conversation to a lot of that generation who, where at the time it just never was talked about and and was forgotten. You know, even, you know, personal story, my mother, when she read the letter, she said, oh, my goodness, my mom told me about this story years later. You know, my grandmother graduated nineteen forty as well as my grandfather. But remembered, remembered that story and how, you know, horrific it was that day to be there and and witness that. It really stuck with people. And others, is this okay? I just keep talking right now like, I, 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 feel free if you want to jump in. Again, I want this to be a conversation. I absolutely think this is, this is important to talk about. I don't think it matters that it happened eighty years ago. This was a school employee that made a decision that day that really affected, you know, the life of a Newburyport graduate and again, of all his class, his classmates that day. So I do think it's worth talking about. I think it fits right into maybe the Michael Eaton work, work we've been doing with the school Superintendent Gallagher. And I think it fits in with the newly formed Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Coalition that was a really positive step, I think, for the community to to form that. I know Frank Cousins Jr. is involved with that. You know, a student that day, this is just a quick story, a student that day, Trudy Taylor, who is Livingston and James Taylor's mother, also graduated that class in nineteen forty one. So she was there that day and when Frank Junior's mother died, she sent a condolence letter to Frank Senior. And in that letter, she mentioned that that one incident had a profound impact on her life. She went on to marry Ike Ike Taylor, and he was the dean of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill Medical School, and they worked together to to desegregate that school, you know, back in the, back in the sixties. And she cited that one event as kind of being like the the bell toll for her life in her work towards social justice and equal justice for citizens. And you know, you know, Frank shared that letter with me and I just thought that was just an incredible story. So I mean, I think it goes beyond. I mean, I mean, Frank has a larger extended family that have their own stories and were affected by this. And hopefully, you know, if we do move forward with some sort of public, public forum, you know, maybe Frank would share some of those stories. But um, I just think it's important to have a conversation about it. And and I don't, and again, I appreciated the Knock family reaching out this week with a couple of letters that we received. Because again, I didn't know, I didn't know Mr. Knock. I know he he served a lot of years for the Newburyport Public Schools, and and I don't think one event should should, you know, you know, tarnish his reputation, but I do feel like it did happen. So it's, I don't think it's a question of did it happen. I mean, I just think he made a really poor choice that day that really affected a lot of people. So I guess I'll start there and if other school committee members want to want to chime in, I'd love to hear their thoughts. I love the idea of kind of having a bigger discussion. I know I actually had some, some Knock teachers reach out as well, thinking this would be a great opportunity to bring this into the classroom and have and have some of the students of the Knock work, kind of work on this and discuss it and 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 share their thoughts about it as well. So I mean, I do think there's a lot of opportunities here that can come out of this with this being shared. And again, I think it just starts with, you know, kind of having an open, open conversation about it.
Like Sean, I agree. I think it should definitely be more of like a public forum type of thing than just us trying to make some call. Does anybody else have any thoughts?
I do.
I do too.
Yeah.
You're calling?
I I love the idea of making this a teaching moment and including the students in this. I also, when I think about this this single incident, and I recognize this person had an illustrious career and he was very well respected in the community. But I think of this name and this as representing an era where people were more racist. And I think that we are in an awakening period right now in that this is a great opportunity to make some change. And to think about our schools even being named, I, I personally don't like the idea of naming public schools because that in and of itself makes, it's, it's not inclusive. All of our schools are named after white men. And it, why not, why not women? Why not some, a person of color? These are the things I think of. So that's just what I'd like to add to this conversation.
Thank you. Mayor?
I would just like to agree with all that's been said tonight. I think that, I think for many of us, it was a surprise who didn't know about this situation. In fact, Charlie called me the day before to let me know in advance that this was coming out. I do have Frank's letter that I can send to all of you of his speech. If you haven't had an opportunity to listen to the recording, I would be happy to send a copy of his speech to everybody tomorrow. Frank said he would be happy to speak. He's not, you know, coming out and making any definitive statements about what should happen, but he and I talked about this at length, and I think that this is something that must be decided by a public forum. And it might not be something that can be decided in one public forum. It might require more work than that. I don't think this is something that can happen lightly. So I would like to suggest that, you know, we schedule something, you know, it's the beginning of February, maybe the end of February, so that we give people enough notice about this. And I think that does dovetail with the DEI work that's happening in the city as well as within the schools. And I think it is, it's a teachable moment and we need to have a conversation about that in terms of, you know, what do we do about incidents that happened so many decades ago and where we are today? Is it a reckoning? Do we do make changes? And, you know, you know, why aren't any women named after the schools? But, you know, it's a broader conversation it requires, and Frank said he'd be willing to come and speak, you know, at the forum too. So I think we can arrange this forum, have some speakers there, talk about it. I mean, maybe it would even be something that we could get Michael to chair for us. You know, I think he might be a perfect person to chair a meeting like this. So Sean and I can talk to him about that and see if we could work that out because I think that would make sense to have somebody who's doing the DEI work in our community, both, he's been doing some work with the city DEI as well as the school. So it might, you know, make sense to have him be the person to chair this forum for us. And, you know, we see what the community says at that point. Not sure that we'd make any decisions that night at the forum, but at least we would take in sufficient information to begin to think about where we go at this juncture. And I too really appreciated Jane and David Knox sending their follow up letters to us about Mr. Knock.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I completely agree. I was actually, if we had done this in the retreat, I was going to recommend having Michael Eaton come in and be the facilitator because I just, I think, again, it's a bigger conversation, but I think the community would really benefit from from something like that. Sorry.
Anybody else? Bruce?
Yeah, I, I think a community forum is is the way to do it. One of the questions I had, and, you know, because Sean has been talking to Frank, and I think the mayor has answered the question, was I would be really interested in sort of hearing from Frank about this, what what his, what his thoughts are about this. And and while I have not made up my mind and and I'm kind of with Sheila, I went to PS one oh nine in the Bronx, which has been renamed the Sedgwick School because it's on Sedgwick Avenue. So, you know, I, I'm okay with that. But what I'm grappling with and what I'm struggling with, and I would like to hear from the community, I'd like to hear from Frank and I'd like to hear from Michael, is that it would be wrong to do that today. It was wrong to do that then. It was always wrong. It was never a good thing to do. And there were a lot of people who didn't do that kind of stuff in nineteen forty and nineteen forty one. But so so that's part of what I'm struggling with, you know, doesn't make him an evil man. It makes him a captured by his time. But there were people who did things differently. And that was a choice. And it was a teachable moment that was was, you know, I'm glad that it had an impact on James Taylor's mom. I'm sorry that it had the impact it did on your grandmother, Sean. But it doesn't have to be, it could have been a teachable moment back then that probably would have been dramatically impactful. So so again, I haven't made my mind up at all. But, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm mulling it over. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Dave?
I don't know if I, if I know how to say what I'm trying to say here, but I'll, I'll just go for it. I worry in a discussion about diversity and equity and race, I worry that a lot of people who have never met Mr. Knock and weren't there are going to spend too much time deciding whether or not this individual either was racist or did something in that moment that could be considered racist or inappropriate, or whatever we want to call it, so much as spend our efforts helping Newburyport ensure that we are moving forward to a time of greater equity. And so I, I think when we come to frame the discussion, I just don't know that we, while we can include this as an example, I'm not sure that that we really need to or should be having an open forum about one man and one man's one time decision that we know about. You know, so much as an example of a time that we may not want to be dedicating things to. I got, I mean, I didn't know the guy. I don't really feel the ability to talk or think about him. I agree with with what Sheila said that I don't think public buildings should be named after people for a lot of reasons. But I, I just, I guess I just want to caution us into turning him into some exemplar of of how things can go really wrong and spending just too much time with that level of animosity instead of time moving forward to how do we think about improving the culture of our schools and how do we think about naming things or you know, one of the letters that came to us today was, should we take the George Washington statue down at the Mall? Because, you know, like San Francisco is renaming forty four of their schools right now. So I don't know, there's just a lot of thinking. I just, I just don't know if that's the the route that that a healthy public discussion would go, but I guess that's maybe what Michael could help us frame.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I think.
If I could just jump in, I, you know, David, I understand your concerns and I, but I think that's why you have a facilitator as skilled as Michael Eaton to run, to do this. He would never let the forum go in that direction to become, you know, this, you know, discussion and paint, tainting a person who did something in nineteen forty one. You know, what he would help us is, okay, so where where we are and how we want to move forward as a community and what would be our response. He would, he would help frame the conversation and then, you know, follow up with us in terms of how do we make a decision? So I think he's the perfect person and we need an independent person to be the emcee of this forum and hopefully he can do that.
All right. So I guess, Mayor Hall and Superintendent Gallagher, if you guys can get with Michael Eaton and see how that'll go and Frank as well.
Sure.
Yeah. Steve, did you want to chime in?
Ah, well, I can chime in from the number front. First, Frank and I have probably known each other since the first grade. We both graduated NHS together. Had a lot of interesting life experience. I have great respect for his mom and dad. I also can note that his uncle Ike, Ike Roberts, not only a talented musician, but worked with my father as wooden boat builders. I guess I have a lot of history with the Cousins family and I, again, this is the first I've learned of it too. And I think Ms. Charlie wrote a very thoughtful letter. And I think we have a lot to think about. I guess one of the things that I'm hoping we can do is, you know, I, I guess one of the things I thought about is maybe what I would have done if I was Rupert Knock on that day. Would I have knee jerked into what he ended up doing? Or maybe would I have walked with Mr. Cousins myself, or maybe had my assistant principal walk with Mr. Cousins rather than Mr. Cousins walk alone? You know, knowing the graduation tradition, maybe it would have been better to walk at the front of the line, you know, right behind the class officers, which is tradition at the high school. So I, I guess I'm in in learning more about this, I'm troubled. But I'm also hopeful that, as Sheila's mentioned and others have mentioned, that this can be a teachable moment and that, you know, we're today, we need to be better than this, given all the things that society is, you know, you've been flying around and you know, I think I think, you know, hearing from Frank and hearing from Mr. Eaton are ways to start that. So I, I look forward to learning more. Thank you. All right.
Just had one, one more thing I wanted to add. I think it would be really helpful if he wants to be there, if we were to invite Frank to the to the forum as well, if he wants to be there.
Yeah, he does.
Great.
Number twelve, Mr. Gallagher, Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Leads. Yes. So just going back to the, we also work with essential partners who are skilled in facilitating community dialogue too. So I'll work with the mayor, talk to Michael and also essential partners also might be a great facilitator, depending on how big the community forum forum is. So we'll work that, work with the mayor and and we'll assist with that. Moving on to the Student Opportunity Act. So as part of the Student Opportunity Act, there has to be a plan that is developed and submitted for approval. This was also part of one of the commissioners' meetings with the superintendents to, part of the regulation is to submit your plan on the additional funding in through Title One regulations and procedures. You, you don't have a lottery way of where you're going to put the funding. But this really, what we're looking to do is to enhance and focus on our reading. So right now we have a point five reading coach and a point five intervention, reading intervention. So these funds would go to have a full time. So your reading coach would work with the faculty and work with the teachers and reading strategies. And then you'd have the full time intervention. Interventionist to work with students that are struggling with, you know, reading. So overall, this is the plan. We highlight where we've been in the plan and Assistant Superintendent Bick did a nice job, I think, really summarizing the reading initiative and the literacy work that we've done over the past few years. Also tied into the plan is the work we've done with our L's. population. So for this, uh, Student Opportunity Act, part of the regulation is to have the school committee. They've seen it. They voted, um, to, to accept the, the plan. And that's, and that's where we're at right now. Many of the districts are behind with their plans because of COVID. But this was just something that the districts need to fill in. And I know, um, Mr. Hawke has had some questions regarding our literacy and I do have some answers to those questions, but I would recommend that we have, um, Emily Russen and our literacy coordinators come in and we could probably do a, uh, in-depth presentation for the school committee members, uh, regarding the plan. But basically for the funding, the additional funding, we would, uh, utilize that funding to enhance those two positions. So you'd have a full-time reading coach working with the faculty and a full-time reading interventionist working with the students. That's the quick summary.
Superintendent, I just want to be clear. We, we did this before, right? We went over this and almost voted on it. Wasn't there discussion? We, we kind of had to vote on it because it was required by law, correct?
Correct.
All right. So does everybody, can we get a motion to approve this plan?
Motion to approve the plan?
Akin.
Discussion?
I just want to say I, I would appreciate the, the further future discussion. Definitely doesn't happen tonight, but there's just a lot of work and I think it also ties into the, the things you were talking about with trying to bring some more special education students back into the district to improve the overall literacy program. And I think it's a big deal to change the district's approach to literacy and thinking about literacy instruction, especially at the lower grades. So it would be great to hear, to hear some of the science and, and some of the direction about that.
Totally.
So thank you.
Further discussion or can I hear all in favor?
I just want to say that I agree with what Dave just said.
Thank you.
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
I don't mean to be getting out ahead of you, but when you say that we're voting, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, great. Um, Superintendent's report. Mr. Gallery, Gallagher again.
All right. So just some updates. We, we've already talked about uh, the good news regarding the, uh, vaccination for the faculty. Uh, the other piece, um, is we did the prevalence testing, the surveillance testing, if you recall, for the originally working with Cattado and CIC. So we, uh, did our surveillance testing. The second phase of that is we're going to be working, um, and Kathy Ricky will have details from DESC and the binex testing. So those are the, uh, tests that are, uh, DSC is providing districts free surveillance testing. So our goal with that is to continue, uh, with the pool, uh, testing for our faculty up until we, uh, completely become vaccinated, utilizing the binex testing resources. And then we actually would like to extend the pool, working with our medical advisory team and looking at our data to certain, um, student groups, uh, within the school. We're really looking at Cohort C and also some of the high school cohorts. And that would be pool testing. That wouldn't be like a full district surveillance testing. So it would be a systematic pool testing for students. Uh, the other population that we're going to be, um, looking at is, um, for the high school population, when you're looking at the spread or COVID, uh, it is, uh, in the upper grades. I mean, not only just in Newburyport, but throughout the Commonwealth and as we all know athletics. Uh, although we've done a great job, um, at the high school level with the protocols and the safety protocols, uh, the surveillance testing. Uh, we'd also like to expand to that cohort of students. Just, uh, it just adds another layer of, uh, safety protocols, I think, for the students. And then it also gives us, uh, data on making, uh, decisions if we're looking at, you know, hybrid or more in person or having to go remote. I think the more data, data sources that we have, the better. So that's our phased-in plan and working with Dr. Sue and Mike Allard and Kathy Ricchio. It's really to determine how many students, when we get to that level, and how many staff members that we need to include into the pool testing. And then also the availability of, uh, the binex testing from the state. So all of that work is being worked on right now. So we'll have a, a system as we continue with our in-person learning for the hybrid model with the ultimate goal, um, is to safely bring more and more students back. So that's our surveillance testing update right now. With that, so, you know, we, we have a lot going on. I'm really proud of the district and proud of the people working behind the scenes. Um, you know, we have a great team here. And the partnership with the city is just amazing. So in school committee, you guys, you know, I've said since last March, we got to stay in this together. And at times, people try to pull you apart from the outside, but I think we've all stayed together with the goal is trying to bring students back as safe as we can. And up to this point, I think we've done, we've done a pretty nice job. Just a couple of other updates. We continue to work with Michael, uh, Edman. He's been working with the district on a regular basis. And working with the leadership team. He's also working, uh, office hours now with, uh, building administrators at all the different levels, um, regarding cultural competency work uh, and working with the staff. Remember that our medical advisory team, we meet every Wednesday where we're looking at COVID trends, where we also get, uh, assistance, as we said, with not only surveillance testing, with vaccinations, uh, a lot of questions regarding that. And that's been really just so beneficial since the opening of school. Our, uh, NEF allocations, uh, we just had that meeting the other day. And once again, the NEF has just been a tremendous supporter of the school system in our community and has allocated over $225,000 towards different projects and enhancement, uh, within the school system. So we're extremely thankful for them. And, um, our budget meetings, we've started our budget meetings last week. We have some more budget meetings coming up this week as we're development, developing our preliminary budget, um, that we'd like to present. I think it's on the February 23rd is our target goal. To give the district and the school committee members, um, kind of where we're at for the preliminary budget and the needs of all the schools. So we're doing a lot of work and we continue to move the district forward. There were some questions. I'm, I'm working out of my offices. I mean, my home, which is now kind of my office. I have papers all around. There were some questions regarding, uh, homeschooling from last year to this year. I think Nancy answered some of those, but last year we had, uh, five students that were homeschooled. Uh, and this year we're up to 47 students, uh, that are being homeschooled. And that's all COVID related, um, and families making decisions because of the virus. So they're homeschooling, uh, pretty much for, because of the virus. Our private school numbers, um, we're actually have less. Last year we had 234 students district-wide attending private schools. And this year we have 211. And as we've been looking at the trends over the last couple of years, I really believe more and more Newburyport families and students are staying in Newburyport Public Schools, which I think is a, a testament of the hard work of the faculty and support staff and the education that we're offering. So those, uh, those numbers there. And I think I think that's all I have. I have, um, our, uh, school choice, uh, numbers and we're looking at, I think we're going to use data from last year and also some of the data this year, and we're going to start looking at the grades where we feel we can open up, uh, school choice. Um, and I think that's also another, um, testament of the Newburyport Public Schools, because typically when we open up grades for school choice, they fill up. So if we offer 10 slots in one grade, they tend to fill up and, uh, and more grades down, down the road. So I think with the, um, you know, and this is the other piece that Nancy Lysek and myself and all other superintendents, the state is looking at your October 1st numbers, which they typically do. Superintendent, uh, right now working or trying to work with the commissioner. Because those numbers, our October 1st numbers, we're down, um, around, you know, 100 students and a lot of that is because of COVID. Cause you know, the homeschooling, um, those numbers count against you. So by utilizing those October 1st numbers for this past year, it's not really a reflection because many of those students are going to be coming back into the school system, uh, when we start in September again. So the superintendents are working, as I said, with the state and really it would be beneficial if we just utilize similar numbers from the year, the year previous. So but that's where we're at, um, with school choice. We'll work with our principals and see what, um, what areas and what grades we feel we can add more students.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions?
Sean, can you clarify the, the date, the, or the time approximate between? Cause the, the vaccine is going to be two doses for the teachers?
Correct.
So if we go like end of February, beginning of March, how long until the?
So you have to, um, so if we go, we're using the Moderna, the Moderna virus, so, uh, vaccine. So if whatever date we give the, uh, vaccine, it's a month from that date. So if, you know, we don't have a specific date, I think we're looking, um, for the week of the, the 24th in that area. Uh, so when we confirm that date, it would be a month later. So it'd be March 24th for the second dose. And I'm just using that, that data as just kind of estimate. I'm just giving an example. So from the end of March, after when the entire faculty is vaccinated, then I start thinking, we start to think of, um, you know, the conversation is obviously going to be, uh, bringing more students back. And I know, um, in October, when we presented the plans, if the cases were going down, which they never have, uh, we were planning on utilizing that Wednesday. So no longer having the, um, Wednesday is a full remote day of bringing more students back. And then working with the state and getting more, uh, information regarding the regulations, if those are revised with the more opportunity after April vacation, bringing more and more students back. So that's kind of where we're at. With that, the good news, um, is for the high school, for example, because so many students have chosen remote, Mr. Wolf has opened up for both Cohort A and Cohort B to come in four days a week. Um, and today he had, um, both cohorts in, I think you tell me it was about 180 students, uh, in the building today. And it was very, very positive. So I think, um, you know, the high school is working because they have more room to bring both the cohorts in, uh, four days a week. So I think from day one, working with our teachers and, and administrators, uh, working through the pandemic, I think our goal is, uh, to try to bring as many students back as we can, as safely as we can. Because I, I think, um, you know, get, getting back to some normalcy is, is going to be a good thing for all of us. So but that's kind of where we're at and, and that's kind of our goal. Though I think the focus is to get more details on the vaccination for the faculty and support staff. Um, and then continue to work, um, with the commissioner and the governor. And, um, hopefully they'll modify or revise some of the regulations and guidelines down the road, once more and more faculty are, uh, getting their vaccination.
Sean, are you getting, I mean, I probably already know the answer to this, but are you getting any kind of early guidance from the commissioner's office about this? Cause there's got to be other schools doing the same thing or, or looking for ways to, to vaccinate their staff. So you would think there has to be some sort of language or discussion about giving schools flexibility to, to bring people in if, if they've got their whole staff vaccinated.
Correct. I know, um, nothing specific, um, at this point, but I know our last meeting with the commissioner, he did, that's what he was hinting towards of taking a look at those guidelines. I think for us, we're, we're going to be, uh, if all goes well, probably one of the first districts to have a fact. So we may be, you know, uh, a district that they're looking at, uh, once we, you know, get the, the vaccine for all of our teachers. So I think that's the idea is the more and more, um, teachers you can get, uh, vaccinated throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the areas or, or the North Shore. Then now you start to take a look at the guidelines and then working with the medical professionals, you know, uh, the healthy modifications of bringing more and more students back. So.
Sean, have we had any kind of numbers since, since we came back? Was that January 22nd? As far as kids testing, I just, I'm just, I might've missed an email or something, but I, I don't remember hearing like we had a, you know, we had close contacts or kids that reported that they tested positive or anything like that.
Yeah, since the break or the last, the last, um,
Since we've been back in school.
Yeah. So the, the first, we saw exactly, I think, what Dr. Sue and Mike Allard kind of predicted. So when we first came back, there was that bump of, um, students and some faculty members that tested positive with COVID. Uh, fortunate for us, I think the last couple of weeks, I mean, last week and moving into this week, our numbers in, in American probably talk, uh, for the city are, you know, have been steady and, and at the lower rates. So that's, that's all positive, um, positive information. And for the people that are listening, we, if you go on the website, we have like, all of the data of all of the students, uh, and faculty impacted by COVID. And when you click on the, um, the, uh, the dashboard, you can click on the different dates and, and how many students. So we've kind of provided that information for people. They can always go and, and kind of look at that. But as of the last couple of weeks, um, it has been, it's, it has slowed down, uh, the positive cases within the student population. So that's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
In terms of where we start, we stand with the city. You know, we're, we're still in the yellow, but you know, we're certainly not out of this by any means. And I never thought I would be saying this, but we're at 103 cases now since this started and 31 deaths. Uh, we had, uh, one case, new case on the 31st, four on the 30th, six on the 29th, four on the 28th, two on the 27th and 12 on the 26th. So, um, you know, it's, it's what it is. We continue to have our, every other week, um, conversations with Mark Olsteen at the hospital. They're doing fine, um, you know, in terms of capacity. People aren't getting quite as sick. They're not ending up in the hospital, um, but we certainly are seeing more positive cases and concern about this new, um, strain that is slowly creeping its way into states in the state, in, in our country. So you know, what I can say that I've been continually saying is that, you know, we still have to really be vigilant in terms of masks and hand washing and social distancing. You know, until we can get everybody vaccinated or at least a majority of people. And our first responders have, uh, had their first shot. They'll be getting their second shot the second week in February. And we also have, uh, 100,000 patients in the greater Newburyport area that are part of Beth Israel Leahy and Ajix Hospital. And that they will start vaccinating 75 and older. Uh, once you get notification from your physician that you can sign up and register, uh, for a vaccine at the Senior Community Center. That starts on February 12th and will run through April 16th, Monday through Friday, and we hope to do 500. Starting with 75 plus, then down to 65 and we'll see how it rolls out. And we'll see how it rolls out. The biggest concern for everybody is whether or not we can get vaccines. And that's what will impact whether or not we can get, um, teachers vaccinated or at least as many as possible. And even if we have to break it up into different groups until we can get the vaccine, but hopefully we'll see better rollout. So that's where we are.
Right. And I agree with the mayor and it's, um, you know, I've been, I said this at the education committee, but it's. You know, the lightest at at the end of the tunnel, we all want to run to it, but we we can't. And we gotta, you know, continue to wear our mask, continue social distance, be patient and not just run and and rush to, uh, to get there. But I think I'm feeling positive that there's, you know, a lot of positive signs moving in the right direction. And I think, um, you know, we we're going to continue to work together and 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 eventually, uh. Hopefully get back to some sense of normalcy within the school system. That's our ultimate goal, so.
We've been away from normal so long that normal is going to seem odd to us.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Superintendent. Um, a, the last item and one that I've never had on an agenda. So it's been a while, um, new business. And if I read Robert's rules correctly, this is pretty loosey-goosey in terms of what it means. It means people can bring up kind of whatever they would like. Uh, any legacy members want to chime in on my understanding of that rule? Is that correct?
No, that's right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, who's got new business? Anybody?
And I would just.
No.
I would just mention the calendar. And again, I think just if we do this forum coming up in February, you know. What are, what are, you know, maybe everyone can start thinking of what what are the other topics we might want to tackle in a public forum, uh, throughout the year.
Um, and I spoke to, um. The, our lawyers, um, assistant Peter, I believe his name the other day. Just to, just to confirm that it was not an OML violation to have that, uh, that, um. Project management tool I mentioned, that Trello was the name of it, that all of us can see and log into and add. As long as things aren't a discussion, it's just like, hey, we're working on this public forum coming up, not, I think we should do this type of stuff. It's totally fine. Which is going to think maybe could be easier in a glance. People just look at it and say, hey, look, here we are, you know, moving the things, uh, to completion, which would be cool. So I'll start to set that up this week. And hopefully people like to use it.
Right.
I believe this is the, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Uh, apologies for technical and procedural issues. First time, you know?
It's fine, Brian. You did fine. Thank you.
Smoothly next time.
Okay, so please, everyone be safe. Get your cars off the street, shovel your sidewalks.
Sean, any more announcements before we sign off here?
While while we're so busy at school committee, I sent out my, will be a remote learning day tomorrow.
My kids right now.
Barring, barring power outage, so make sure you don't shut the fuse block off when the.
Usually the Curzon Mill area that loses power first. Steve, how are you doing over there? You still have power?
Still here with you, so yes.
Even though you're in darkness behind you. Yes, all right.
So good, yeah.
All right, everybody be safe. All right, take care. Talk soon. Bye.